Call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I will. Tim Hale may be able to call in or come into the meeting. He is not sure yet. Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
George McKee.
Yes.
Robert Yent.
Here.
Moki Tu.
Here.
Jesse Sumner is running a little late. Tam Bovee.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Assemblymember Nowers.
I would move to poll RS 21-101.
If I can clarify, Assemblymember Nowers, did you want to pull it off the agenda? Or are you asking to pull it off the consent agenda? Okay.
Any other changes to the agenda? Mr. Manager.
Deputy Mayor, I would like to poll AM 21-105, and I'm requesting that be pulled from the agenda, period. We may consider bringing that back at a later date.
Do we need to approve, or we just can?
Yeah, I need to ask if there's any objections.
Any objections to pulling, what was your number?
AM 21-105.
Any objections to pulling AM 21-195?
105.
105. Any other, any?
None had passed. At least pulled off the agenda.
Okay. Did we need to approve Stephanie's, too? Because we didn't.
No.
Okay.
Different with the consent agenda.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda? So the agenda is approved.
What was Stephanie's poll?
RS 21-101. Any other changes? All right, the agenda is approved. College of Allegiance, Chris Loskow, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of the preceding meetings, any changes to the minutes being presented? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Agency reports, reports from the cities.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Manager Brown, and Assembly. I'm Linda Ledford, Mayor for the City of Wasilla. Saturday, October 9th, is the Noon Rotary Club's fundraiser, Rotary Uncorked. It's being held at the Menard Center, and the doors open at 6:00 PM. MACCOM has job openings for call-takers. If you're interested, please call 907-373-9050 for more information. Safely dispose of your unused or expired medications, both human and animal, by turning them in Saturday, October 23rd, 2021, from 10:00 to 12:00 PM at the Wasilla and Palmer Fred Myers, also at the Willow Community Center. So does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Ledford. Do we have a report from the school district? I don't see anyone. State of Alaska, Mr. Smolden.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Todd Smolden, Matsu Office of the Governor. Just wanted to say that I am not a doctor, but I had hoped to have one for you later in your agenda. Unfortunately, as you know, they've been very busy lately, and hopefully, if you're still interested, we'll be able to work something out for the October 19th meeting. I did send a couple of links to Manager Brown today, and I think he's going to share those with you. One is a podcast that Commissioner Crum did that I think will be really valuable in understanding kind of where we've been with COVID, where we're at, and where we're going. And so I hope that you'll listen to that. I think it's something everyone should, should listen to. One of the, I think frustrations for, I'll just speak for myself, throughout this year and a half of COVID is that I wish that everyone had the opportunity to listen to the Governor, and Dr. Zink, and Commissioner Crum, and Heidi Hedberg, and the entire leadership team get together on, on a phone call, which they have pretty much every day. And I've been privileged to, to witness that and listen to that, and it, it is nothing like it is depicted by either side of the extreme. You know, one, one side being that, that the Governor's not managing things well, and that if he would just listen to Dr. Zink, things would be better. Well, that's, that's not the way it works. They are great teammates, and Dr. Zink focuses on the science, the medical science, and the Governor focuses on policy. And the one thing that we've really been trying to do is to, to take politics out of this whole experience, because it's not helpful when people are trying to use different statistics to beat up one side or the other. It's very divisive. Unfortunately, that, that has been taking place the last few weeks. There is no doubt that our weekly case count was very high, and, you know, the cumulative data shows that as a state, we are still doing very, very well with case counts, with testings, with mortality, cumulative, all those statistics are still very good. We are experiencing a difficult time with COVID, no doubt about it. The good news is that last week, our case count was down about 30% from the week before in terms of new cases. So if you look at the COVID website, you will see in, in terms of the, the new case count chart, that spike that we had is on a downward trend, and that's really good news, a 30% decrease in new cases from the week before. So that, that is looking very positive. I think another item that's been in the news a lot lately that needs some clarification is hospitalizations, and about 20% of the hospitalizations in Alaska are COVID-related. So that means 80% are other things, accidents, normal illnesses, elective surgeries. There are some hospitals that are still choosing to do elective surgeries rather than postpone them, and that is a choice that they're making, and, and they need to make that choice based on their level of capacity. We do not have mandates telling them that they can't do elective surgeries, but we're hoping that hospitals will make wise decisions, you know, with their capacity restrictions. But it is about 20% of the hospitalizations that are COVID-related at this time. Last time I was here, I talked briefly about the percentage of people vaccinated who are hospitalized. I know there were, people had different bits of information. I looked into that again about a week ago. What DHSS is reporting is that about 12% of those hospitalized are vaccinated. So that means about, you know, 88% at that time were unvaccinated people. So the vaccine doesn't keep you from catching COVID. It's pretty effective in reducing the spread, but what we're really seeing is that if you're vaccinated, you're much less likely to be hospitalized and have severe COVID symptoms. So we still encourage that. And, and there are other therapeutics as well, and the monoclonal antibodies. There is a bit of a tight squeeze on those based on supply worldwide, but those still are available, and we're hoping people will take advantage of that and get tested early. I was going to, to mention a little bit about the legislature, but I imagine Mr. Harris will, will probably speak a little bit to that. But from our perspective, I guess I would just say that we're, we're really hoping that they're taking the approach of Aesop's fable, The Tortoise and the Hare. It was a very, very slow start to the fourth special session, but we're hoping that slow and steady will win the race, and they will provide the rest of the PFD that they didn't provide, and also put forward some long-term fiscal solutions that the people of Alaska can, can vote on. And that's about all I have tonight, but I will take questions if anybody has any. All right. Well, I'll be listening to the rest of the meeting on the way home tonight. Thank you, everyone, for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Smolden. For the record, Assemblymember Sumner arrived at 6:07 PM. Committee reports, is there a joint Assembly School Board Committee on School Issues update?
I can give a quick one. We got an update on, on several different items, and I think there's a slide that's going to go up. One of the updates was on the COVID numbers, one encouraging thing, and we knock on wood hope to see that continue. Their case counts in the schools have been coming down. We got an update on enrollment. The projected enrollment was just over 19,000, and they're sitting at about 18,800. So they're, they're really close, about 300 short. The bus situation, they're optimistic about getting that solved with their staffing. They said they're about 12 drivers short, and they have 10 in training right now, and I think they said three weeks to get them up to speed. So, you know, we'll hope, hopefully on that, too, where we're not being short buses to get the kids to school. They still are seeing a pretty high absentee rate, some, you know, 20% higher than last year. They're hoping that will continue to come down. That has had an effect on student learning. They have a large number of students sitting with failing grades, and they're, they're very aware of it and trying to address it. Those kids are missing school, and it's hard to catch up, so there's a little discussion about that. And then finally, we did have a discussion about healthcare costs and a joint resolution of the, both bodies to say that healthcare pricing transparency would be a priority and urge passage of the All-Payer Claims Database, which is some legislation that the Governor introduced last session. The statistics were 1 in 6 of the operating budget, 1 in $6 of the school operating budget are going to healthcare costs, and 1 out of every $10 at the Borough is going to that. So if we can do something to bring those figures down, that's a lot of money we could spend on some fun things, not healthcare. And that was, I think there was an update on the Site Selection Committee that'll be coming forward. Manager might have more to say about that, but that's about it from the, the School Board, the Joint School Board.
Thank you. Any public relations reports? Manager comments, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Assembly, a few updates tonight. First, I want to start by saying thanks for the emergency preparedness expo that happened on September 25th. I would like to say thank, thank you to the event sponsors, which included Matsu Borough, the City of Wasilla, the Alaska Red Cross, AARP, the Local Emergency Planning Committee in Deep Tree. We had 32 volunteers and 30 Borough employees involved in the direct planning and setup. Volunteer groups included Colony JROTC, Primal Martial Arts, and CERT members. We had 46 participating organizations and businesses for a successful expo at the Menard. So estimated attendance at that event was 750. They had some great food trucks outside in the parking lot as well, and it actually turned into be a very nice community event despite the pandemic. So thanks for those folks that pressed on and got that done. One less thing to count up as a cancellation due to COVID. So appreciate the effort that was put into that by DES and City of Wasilla and all the support folks that made that happen. On another topic, I wanted to call the Assembly's attention to an Economic Development Administration Build Back Better grant that we're moving forward with. The reason I'm bringing it up tonight is that the application deadline for Phase 1 is October 19th. That is actually when you will be voting on the resolution, just due to the timing of things. EDA put out what they call these NOFOs, the Notice of Funding Opportunities, for a number of different grant opportunities tied to the American Rescue Plan Act. They're all have very tight, short timelines. So we looked at it, analyzed it, and then, and basically, we've come up with this, this Build Back Better Regional Challenge Grant, which allows for regional coalitions to submit a concept paper with three to eight potential projects that will help develop a regional growth cluster and stimulate the regional economy. So the, it's a two-phase application process. The first phase has a deadline, as I mentioned, October 19th, and includes the submittal of our concept detailing the creation of a regional growth cluster. If chosen as a Phase 1 recipient, grant funding is then provided from EDA, I think it's somewhere around half a million dollars, to develop and refine the project applications for Phase 2 funding, which the deadline for Phase 2 is in March of 2022. So basically, you have a very short timeline to get in the door for Phase 1, and then if, if you're selected from Phase 1, you can, you could make your way onto Phase 2. There's a little bit more time and some actual funding that allows you to further develop that. So our concept is this, the Matsu Borough, the Fairbanks North Star Borough, and the Alaska Railroad Corporation have partnered to develop a concept for the creation of a regional growth cluster that will extend the existing rail line from the Parks Highway down to Ashire Road to the Interior Gas Utility. Interior Gas Utility is a utility owned by the Fairbanks North Star Borough, so it's a municipal entity. They have a liquefaction plant, I'm going to refer to it as the Titan Plant, owned by the, the Fairbanks North Star Borough. This project would complete segments 3, 4, and 5 of the Port Mac Rail Extension Project. So those, those segments of the rail basically take you from Ashire up to the Parks, where we have Segment 6 already completed, and would bring you about half of the distance to Port McKenzie. If you're kind of looking at a map, it's about half the total distance. I think the total PMRE project's about 32 miles. This would get us about, about halfway there. And this would allow us to transport liquefied natural gas via rail versus via the road system from the Titan Plant to Fairbanks and North Pole Storage Facilities. The major components of the proposal include the rail completion that I just mentioned to take PMRE and get rail to the plant here in the Matsu Borough, and that it does include actually getting rail up to the plant itself, not just the rail corridor, but we would have to create some connection there to the actual plant itself. It would expand the LNG capacity at the Titan Plant from 50,000 gallons per day to 150,000 gallons per day, and it would develop connections to support rail transportation of LNG to IGU Storage and Vaporization Facilities in Fairbanks and the North Pole. The total request for this project is anticipated to be between 150 and 175 million dollars, and a resolution will be before the Assembly at your next regular meeting on October 19th. And so what we plan to do is move forward with the application, and we'll submit it. If the Assembly, for some reason, chooses not to adopt the resolution, we will pull our application. So that's our strategy. I feel pretty good about this because it's been a longstanding Assembly priority to complete the Port Mac Rail Extension Project, and the Assembly also adopted a resolution in 20, in, I believe, February of 2020, supporting the expansion of the Titan Plant. So there's already been Assembly action and knowledge of some of these efforts. What we're doing is trying to bring those efforts together. There's obviously a lot of economic benefit that needs to be communicated around getting natural gas into the Fairbanks area. As far as direct economic benefit to us, one of the benefits, of course, is it gets all that truck traffic off our road system and onto the rail, and allows them to have better assurance of a natural gas supply to Fairbanks and be able to build on that volume that they currently have trucking there today. So I wanted to just give the Assembly a heads-up as we're moving forward, and staff are investing some time in that. And then the Fairbanks North Star Borough is also working through their Assembly process to get resolution of support for them. Their actual election was today, so they're kind of engaged with that right now. But, but Mayor Ward's also working through that, and we're coordinating with the Alaska Railroad. So I'll take any question, I'll pause for a second if there are any questions on that before I move on to the next topic.
Assemblymember Sumner.
Through the Deputy Mayor to the Manager, would it be possible, as part of that project, to also run natural gas over to Willow, or would that be entirely a separate sort of thing?
Yeah, so through the Deputy Mayor to Mr. Sumner, I think that would be separate. We are looking at that project. We've been coordinating with NSTAR to see what that would look like. Funny enough, they actually want to use the Port Mac Rail Corridor to put their gas line in, because it's a shorter run than bringing it along the, the road system. We will have that project package. We're going to bring another resolution to the Assembly and introduce it also on the 19th. I'll speak to that at the next meeting. But really, what we would hope to do with that project is prepare a short narrative and a cost estimate based, based on that work within NSTAR, and put that in what we're titling, basically, a federal infrastructure bill. So if the federal infrastructure bill in DC were to pass, we will have a list of Assembly-approved projects based on the different categories that we think would qualify under that bill, and that project to extend natural gas to Willow would be on that list. But we don't think it would necessarily fit for what we're trying to do here. And also, there's a $200 million limit on these. So we're also kind of buttoned up against the top end of that, that window that EDA's created under Build Back Better.
The, the total cost, 150 to 175 million, how much of that would go to the rail?
So right now, I think we were estimating, and these are rough estimates, about 60 million dollars probably on our end, probably a little bit more if we have to consider that connection to the Titan Plant. They need to do some rail connections in Fairbanks, both in Fairbanks and at North Pole for their storage and vaporization, so that would be part of it. I don't know what those numbers are right now. The railroad, railroad was pulling those engineering estimates. And then there's the liquefaction expansion, which I believe is somewhere around 70 million dollars, maybe, just to expand the plant. So when you start adding that up, you quickly get to somewhere in that 150 to 175 range. So I think one of the benefits of this project, and, you know, we'll speak to it in a little bit more detail, is we actually get this thing put together because it's evolving quickly. There's a lot, I mean, to me, it, it's, when you look at what Alaska is probably going to submit under this EDA, under the Build Back Better, there, there's probably only likely going to be maybe two other applications come out of the State of Alaska. I think ours is far more developed. There's actual, actually been construction done. We have design, we have engineering estimates. So this isn't conceptual, like, I mean, some of it, I mean, they've looked at, you know, what the rail expansion in Fairbanks might look like, but a lot of this stuff has already been studied. There's already been numbers, you know, there's already been an economic analysis, there's already been design done, it's already been permitted in many cases, like when we look at PMRE. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of great opportunity here to move on a number of priorities that different folks have envisioned over time, bring it together and create this, this regional growth cluster. The question is, how well can we tell the story? So assuming the Assembly moves on that resolution, that would then kick off our application and then a lobbying effort, more than likely to try to get different support from folks across the state to include our federal and state delegation. And in full disclosure, there may be a federal match requirement down the line. That would not be, there would be no commitment for that requirement until Phase 2. So we're mindful of that, but we also have a couple of different ideas about how we might get at that. We're just not at that stage of development yet.
Assemblymember McKee.
Now, as I understand it, what we're asking for is the completion of 18 miles of the 32. the thirty-two that aren't connected in, on the Point McKenzie area. Is that correct?
Through the Mayor to Mr. McKee, generally, it's about half of the total distance of the project.
Okay. Now, I, I'm just finishing up six years on the Assembly. And six years ago, it was estimated that the cost, the total cost to do the thirty-two miles was going to be a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. Three years later, that was up to a hundred and thirty-four million dollars. Then, the price of steel and the price of wood have gone up. I actually sat down and did a, a, a test of thumb on how much that thirty, that uncompleted, that not completed eighteen miles is going to cost somewhere around a hundred and fifty million dollars, because there's no steel laid down anywhere. The estimates that have been presented to the Assembly, when, that I have seen, okay, are quite frankly invalid. And I would like to see real ones when you guys come in with them, if you're going, on the nineteenth. If you can delay it, of course, until November twelfth, you don't have to worry about me.
Through the Deputy Mayor to Mr. McKee, we'll look at that. We don't have the benefit of delaying it because of the application deadline on October nineteenth, but we are working with the railroad to update those estimates. And I think generally, I think the last Assembly priority that the Assembly adopted in October of last year had an estimate of a hundred and forty million dollars to create PMRE. One other point I would make here, too, is when we talk about this completion of, there is actually steel down on Segment Six, just for the record. But when we talk about Segments Three, Four, and Five, this would actually create an operational rail with an active customer, which is a little bit different than what we've been talking about for a long time. So I think that is one of the selling points, as well, as we're not talking about just building a rail and then wondering who's going to come and use it. You would have an active customer, I would say, almost right away, obviously. So I think that's one of the big selling points to this approach as well.
Assemblymember Sumner.
Yeah, so I'm curious, who would manage this project? Would it be us? Would it be Fairbanks? Would it be the railroad? Some combination?
Yeah, so through the Deputy Mayor to Mr. Sumner, right now, we're going to go in, we're going to take the lead agency role for the Phase One submission because EDA does not allow a co-applicant for Phase One. But for Phase Two, we are expecting to be co-applicants with the Fairbanks North Starborough. And you have to designate, I'm going to get this terminology wrong, but basically, a lead economic development official. And right now, we're asking Fairbanks North Starborough's economic development folks to serve as that lead entity, because they're going to have to produce all the economic analysis around the energy cost and the benefit to customers in Fairbanks. Like, we're really not going to be able to contribute to that discussion directly. So I think it would make more sense, and IGU has a lot of that customer data and growth projections, and, and they have to be able to discuss the, the ability for them to expand their distribution system, et cetera. So I think they're in a better position to communicate that side of the, the story. All right, I'm going to keep moving before somebody thinks of another question. So I just have two other requests for the Assembly here. The first one is, we would like to request a special meeting at the, before the regularly scheduled meeting on October nineteenth at four-thirty in the afternoon. That would be to get an economic update. We haven't confirmed the Department of Labor's availability just yet, but the Small Business Administration, the local folks, have already committed to that. So basically, that would allow the Assembly one hour to interact and get an economic, an update on the economic indicators relevant to the Matsuhboro, and kind of engage in a Q and A and talk through that. Assemblymember Nowers had mentioned this at the last meeting, so we would ask for your approval in getting that scheduled.
Any objection? What, what is your concern?
You're right. George, you're right.
Can you use your mic?
I don't see the value in holding a very short, special meeting where the public has not been notified, and they can come in, listen to what we have to say, and get their input. If this is something that, if it's serious, we ought to put it out there, we ought to publish it, we ought to let the people have a, have a chat over.
So is my understanding?
I'm going to vote.
Okay, well, is my understanding this would be published and noticed and open to the public?
Fine, I still want to vote.
Okay, so we're voting. Oh, Stephanie, is Assemblymember Nowers?
I just, I guess I'm not exactly understanding your objection. If the objection is that it should include the public, it does include the public. I think it's valuable for the Assembly to get a update on how we're doing economically. We have a problem with the number of jobs that we have to go into anchorage for, you know, how we're doing, how are our businesses recovering? What is happening with unemployment? You know, Department of Labor has come here several times and provided that kind of update. I think it's valuable to do, at least on a yearly basis. So I see a lot of value in it, and the public isn't excluded, so just wondering if you want to maintain your objection.
Yes.
All right, we're going to vote on a special session at four-thirty PM on October nineteenth.
It is passed with Assemblymember McKee opposed. By the way, to the Assembly, this voting board over here is now working again.
All right, I have one more request for a special meeting. This one, I've talked to Assemblymember Yount about. We talked about a special meeting to bring back the gravel industry folks. I think we had originally discussed that being on December seventh. So obviously, that's some time out, but we figured we might as well go ahead and get that thing scheduled. We were proposing four PM that afternoon, which would leave us, you know, about an hour and a half to talk to the gravel industry, and I think Mr. Yount was generally in support of that concept.
So any objection to a special meeting at four PM on twelve-seven to discuss gravel?
Obviously, I don't have any objection, but just want to make sure that we go through the proper channels to let everybody in the industry know. I know we will, but I just want to put that out, that I'm hoping they all show up and help us on this, so that's all I got.
Noted, thank you. Any objections? Sounds like that's on the calendar.
That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Attorney comments, Mr. Sporopoulos.
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Clerk comments, Madam Clerk.
The clerk's report is in your red folder. Attached to that is next Tuesday's joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And as you can tell, the room is divided in half again. The City of Palmer is having their election this evening. And also, on the ten-nineteen meeting, we're going to have the half the room also because absentee voting will be happening. And that's it.
Thank you. Citizens and other correspondents, are there any comments on the citizen and other correspondents being presented? Hearing none, they are presented. Madam Clerk, please read the IMs into the record.
I am twenty-one-two-oh-one, informing the Assembly of a grant amendment with, from the Alaska State Department of Fish and Game for the Big Lake Area Fish Passage Improvement Project that will be presented to the Borough Manager for Signature. I am twenty-one-two-oh-four, a notification of certification of two thousand twenty-one regular real property, personal property, oil and gas properties, exempted properties, and Board of Equalization actions. I am twenty-one-two-oh-six, reporting on the conclusion of contract bid seventeen-zero-eight-two-P with Architects Alaska for the Palmer and Wasilla Pool Improvement Designs Projects.
Any comments on the IMs? Hearing none, the IMs are presented. There are no persons to be heard. Public hearings. We've reached public hearings. You'll have three minutes to testify. For people who are testifying by phone, once you hear the item you want to speak to read into the record, please hit star three, and you will hear, your hand has been raised. You will know it's your time to speak. When you hear your line has been unmuted, please state your name for the record and spell your last name. Ordinance twenty-one-dash-zero-eight-five, Madam Clerk, please read the legislation into the record.
Norton's amending MSB seventeen-six-seven-oh-three-oh exemptions under Chapter seventeen-six-seven tall structure, structures, including telecommunication facilities, wind energy conversion systems, and other tall structures. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Is there a staff report?
Good evening, Assemblymembers, Deputy Mayor, and staff. My name's Jason Ortiz. I'm the current acting director, planning director, and the current Development Services Manager for the Manus Kistis in the Borough. I'm here tonight to talk about OR twenty-one-zero-eight-five. This legislation was at the request of Deputy Mayor Tam Bovee, which was brought to her attention from members of the community and her district. When the legislation was initially introduced, it, it was intended to prevent businesses from having tethered balloons on, like, on the sides of businesses and things like that. But it did not contemplate the idea of people starting businesses with helium-style tethered balloons and taking tourists up in the air. Ultimately, discussions in the community, community members in the Talkeetna area led to them requesting this change. And MSB seventeen-dot-sixty-seven-dot-zero-three-zero has a subsection A two, which talks about this one hundred and eighty days. This legislation before you amends that to thirty days. So currently, if a person were to operate this type of business in question for a hundred and eighty days, and then they move their locations, they could bypass the intention of the, of the code currently. So this is currently just closing that loophole that exists right there. The legislation still allows temporary tall structures that can go into the air for thirty days that exceeds the height threshold for conditional use permits, but then it needs to be removed. So this is not changing that at all. On August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the Planning Commission voted in favor of recommending approval for this legislation, and it was approved and has amended unanimously. And as you can see, the administration has recommended the adoption of this as well. And in conclusion, it's a pretty straightforward request that the community and Assemblymember Bovee has requested. Oh, is there any questions anyone has?
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
I will open the public hearing. We have Beth Fried.
This is Beth Fried. I live in the Palmer area. And I noticed that when you were talking about the tall structures, you removed the drilling rigs. And we use drilling rigs to get water, and the drilling rigs move throughout a new subdivision, hole to hole to hole to hole. And if you, if you remove their ability to use those drilling rigs, then you remove a good portion of their ability to dig for water for the subdivisions, which are providing economic development. Really don't like that. Sounds not good. So that's my opinion on this issue.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on the phone? Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this? Go ahead. Just turn the microphone on and state your name, please.
My name is Doug Barco, B-A-R-T-K-O, and I live up in the Lazy Mountain area. I just wanted to discuss a musher kennel license proposal. In addition to the current system...
Excuse me, we're just speaking to ordinance twenty-one-dash-zero-eight-five right now.
There will be a separate time for audience participation. So I have to wait?
Yes, please.
Oh, God, I apologize.
Thank you. Do we have someone on the phone?
Hi, my name is Ruth Wood, and we're having some problems here. I never, John just called you on the cell phone, and we got the star three, hit star three, but I tried on our landline and started, hit star three, and Kathy Trump just texted me that she doesn't think she got through. So she's not with me, but we just want to make sure there's not any problems with the phones after we had one with the Planning Commission. Anyway, I do want to testify on this ordinance. I live in Talkeetna, and I was one of many people up here who got upset when something was going to be considered a temporary tall structure that was going to be up here all summer and every summer. And then the code was a little ambiguous as to whether or not that would require a conditional use permit. And the community thought it should, and we, but the Borough kind of went back and forth, and I guess they could speak to that. But, but regardless, the thing, the thing we were concerned about didn't happen, probably because the tourist season didn't happen as much as usual, and the weather was pretty bad. But this, this piece of code is supposed to address the problem that, that we almost had last summer, so I'm very much in support of it. And anyway, I hope I said my name, which is Ruth Wood, and my husband is also, is also here, so I'm going to hand the phone to him.
Hi, can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is John Strassenberg, S-T-R-A-S-E-N-B-U-R-G-H, and my testimony is very simple. I, I support this closing of the loophole, and I hope that the Assembly passes this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the phone? Anybody else in the audience would like to speak to this? Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Assemblymember Nowers, will you please move the legislation?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty-one-dash-zero-eight-five.
Yes, we're just going to begin discussion at this point.
Assemblymember McKee, if I can get you to turn your mic on.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Assemblymember McKee, did you have a question?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm kind of relaying here. You heard Beth's comments about the drilling rigs and what have you. Tell us about that. Is that the intent of the legislation?
That, that is not the intent of the legislation, sir.
Would it, in fact, be the reality of the legislation?
Could we have the attorney speak to this, please?
It would not.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Assemblymember Sumner.
So my, my understanding is that because it says "or," I don't remember the exact wording, but it said "or used in active construction." So, so a drilling rig that is actively drilling a water well would be exempt, so.
Jesse stole my thunder.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Assemblymember Nowers, yes, no?
Just would like to hear, I think Assemblymember Sumner's right, but just if the attorney could acknowledge that, and then I just have one other question. Is that correct?
That's the interpretation, correct.
Okay. And then the other thing I noted in the legislation, if I'm understanding it right, is any structure that was used for less than thirty days would not be subject to this. So if somebody were drilling a well and they didn't have it up there for thirty days, they wouldn't have to go through this process. Or, or any... Or or anything, any other structure that was less than 30 days, they do not need a CUP under this.
Through the Deputy Mayor, this is Jason Ortiz. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Sumner.
I guess, can we clarify that a little bit more? Because my understanding is that it's if the temporary structure is up for less than 30 days, or if it's used in active construction, so it's an or, you could you could have it up for more than 30 days and actively being in use.
Mr. Attorney.
That's correct. And remember, this ordinance regards tall structures, so up to 85 feet, you don't need a permit regardless of anything. You'd only get an administrative permit if whatever you're using is above 85 feet tall, and then you need a CUP if it's above 125 feet tall. So I don't know, there aren't too many things that people are using that are that tall.
Assemblymember Yount.
Through the Deputy Mayor, to the attorney, is construction and resource development considered the same thing? So if if we were going to set up a rig to drill for natural gas for 50 years that was taller than that, would it be exempt because it's construction?
It would not be exempt. Active construction projects, construction, I'd have to pull up 17125 in our code, but construction would not be, you know, drilling. And if it was a permanent structure over 85 feet, it would need an administrative permit. If it was over 125 feet, it would need a conditional use permit.
Have we ever had any of those applications over a request for over 85 or 125 seen in the last 20 years that you've been here?
For something other than a telecommunications tower?
Correct.
I don't recall any sitting here. I know Mr. Ortiz is relatively newer. I'm looking around the room, I don't see anybody else. I don't think anything other than cell towers have have been tall enough to require or permanent enough to require either an administrative permit or a conditional use permit. I'm shooting from the hip here, I don't staff the Planning Commission, but I don't believe anything of that height, because again, we're dealing with the tall tower ordinance. You have to remember also, the tall tower ordinance does not apply in industrial districts. So there's an industrial district down at the port, so if there's anything that tall down there, doesn't apply in the cities, obviously. And it also does not apply to DOT's really tall highway lights, I think it was 185 feet. They're exempt if they're within the right of way and their primary use is to illuminate the roadway.
Thank you, sir.
Assemblymember Two.
Does that mean that the cranes that are out there putting on all of our bridges need to have permits to have their their cranes in operation? They've been there for months already.
So A, if it's an active construction site, they would be exempt. And B, the crane would have to be over 85 feet tall to even trigger the CUP or the administrative permit, yeah.
Assemblymember Two.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. An active construction site needs to have no more new permits, no matter what tooling they're using. This is basically all about the balloon up in Talkeetna.
Right. The ordinance before you already exists, it's already in code. What it's doing is it's we're shortening the length of other temporary tall structures from 180 days down to 30 days.
Assemblymember Sumner.
So I just want to be clear, is this even going to do anything for the balloon in Talkeetna? What if they untether it for like a couple of days and then re-tether it? Well, I mean, it's a balloon, right? So.
30 calendar days total within a consecutive 12-month period. So I suppose if they went 10 days and 10 more days and 10 more days, they could spread out 30 days across the summer. But the current code reads less than 30 calendar days total within a consecutive 12-month period.
Yeah, but does it have to be tethered the whole day? I mean, what if they deflate the thing overnight and then inflate it in the morning and re-tether it or something?
Well, that would be another day. That would be one of the 30. Then if they untether it and re-tether it on the same site, that would be number two of the 30.
Well, I'm just wondering, because we don't regulate hot air balloons, right? But while you're filling the hot air balloon, you may have it, or loading it, you may have it tethered to the ground, right? So I'm just not sure that...
So it's my understanding this is not a hot air balloon. This is actually, I believe, helium, and it is left inflated for the entire duration of the season. So they basically just tie it down, have someone on site overnight, and open up business again in the morning. It's not a inflate and deflate situation. So I do believe the the change would address their concerns. Assemblymember Nowers.
Call a question.
Any objection to calling the question? Any objection to passing this ordinance change? Hearing? So close. Assemblymember McKee, turn your mic on.
The question came, somebody made the remark, we're doing this for one item? We're doing an ordinance for one stinking item? Yeah, I think I object to it.
All right, I'd just like to address this. It is this one item that brought it to our attention, that there were circumstances that we had not anticipated, and we would like to address that going forward. So yes, there's one circumstance currently, but there is the possibility for others. That being said, let's call the question.
I'm against.
Are you against the ordinance or against calling the question?
Nope, call the question.
All right, we're voting on the ordinance.
If I can clarify.
Please.
There was no objection to calling for the question. We were moving forward to the main motion.
Yes.
All right, we're voting on ordinance 21 dash 085.
It passed with Assemblymember Two and McKee opposed.
Thank you. Ordinance 21 dash 092, Madam Clerk, can you please read the legislation into the record?
An ordinance amending MSB 2320 Forest Management affecting timber salvage sales on borough land by adopting broader terms to address forest health and facilitate the removal of damaged timber and repealing MSB 2860 oh seven oh Traffic Safety Plan and MSB 2860 oh eight oh Timber Transport Permit. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Eric Phillips, Community Development Director, through the Deputy Mayor. You know, land and resource management's been looking at all kinds of options to address the spruce bark beetle problem and the wildfire hazard that that we have out there in the forest. One aspect of our review was to look at the regulatory environment surrounding this issue. And while we cannot realistically deal with, in the short term anyway, on state or federal regulations that that are impediments, we did look at borough code and believe there are some borough regulations that are impediments that could be changed to encourage some of the smaller timber operators to to be able to do more with our with our wood. Smaller timber operators have actually expressed that complying with a timber transportation permit, or TTP as it's called, and its traffic safety plans are a disincentive to them working on on borough lands. In fact, the historical numbers will show that there's only been one commercial timber sale since 2007. Because of that, there might be something to their contention that we're doing some things to inhibit their ability to to get out there and work. And quite frankly, there's also some indication that our rules are inhibiting sales on state lands as well. The legislation that before you, ordinance 21-092, is intended to facilitate timber salvage sales and help us better respond to the beetle kill and dead and dying tree problem we have. Currently, salvage sales are restricted to, in borough code, to land conversions. Land conversions are when we take a parcel of forest land and convert it into a fire station or a school or something like that. This is one way, this legislation, that the current code ties our hands. There has been much concern expressed that we're sacrificing safety, yet you will find that the data simply does not support this. In fact, neither the traffic safety data from the feds or the state troopers support the assertion that logging truck traffic poses a traffic safety hazard. Emerson will go through those numbers in a little more detail here in a minute. I'd also like to point out that none of our neighboring local governments, whether it's Anchorage, Kenai, Denali, or Fairbanks, have any regulations comparable to this TTP and safety plan that we have. Nobody else is doing it. I think it's important to point out that it's not the intent of this legislation to change the borough's authority to require road maintenance or safety improvements. MSB 28 dot 60 dot 100, which we're not changing with this legislation, gives the borough the authority to require loggers to make road safety improvements and perform road maintenance. Our belief is that borough contracts and permits are the better vehicle for enforcing these safety requirements. And lastly, on a personal note, I will say that I've been here going on 10 years, it's never made sense to me that the borough singles out logging trucks for such regulation, leaving out gravel trucks, fuel trucks, lumber haulers, and every other type of heavy hauler that's on the road. Anyway, that's all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Emerson to go over some of the the details.
Good evening, members of the Assembly. My name is Emerson Kruger. I work in the Land Management Division with Eric. I want to follow up with his overview of the legislation and briefly speak to the public involvement that was required to bring this ordinance to you tonight. Borough code requires ordinance of this nature to be presented for public hearing at the Planning Commission with the customary public notice. It also requires notice, introduction, and a public hearing at the Assembly. And all those things were completed for this legislation to get here tonight. We've heard concerns about logging truck safety, and I'll limit what I what I say tonight just to address that concern. Logging is a dangerous business. It's got the highest fatalities in of all professions in the U.S. cross-country. And in the last years, despite there being an average of 400 to 1,000 logging truck trips each year on borough roads, there have been two federally reportable logging truck accidents in the borough. Both of them happened in 2014, and they both happened in Wasilla. From the data that I was able to find, zero deaths have been attributed to logging trucks on public roads in Alaska. The largest wood harvest operation that's happened in the borough happened between 2001 and 2006. It was the wood chip export. It generated the highest concentration of logging truck traffic in recent history, and there were no federally reported logging truck accidents during that time. Both the state and the federal data available for Alaska indicate that logging truck traffic is not a public safety issue. Now, I want to leave with one final point, and that is if you look at the standard borough timber sale, it's going to be around 160 acres, looking at what we've sold going back 25, 30 years. And if you compare that to somebody that has a small gravel pit, you can run 200 end dumps out of a small gravel pit and be under that 2,000 cubic yard threshold, and there's no requirement for a permit, and there's no requirement for road maintenance. And a 200 logging truck trip timber sale is going to take a couple of years, and then it's going to be done, it's going to be over with. And that small gravel pit can be in business for 20 years. And I just, I present that for contrast, and thank you for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Assemblymember Sumner.
I'm curious, for 160-acre timber sale or lease, what does that typically go for? I'm just wondering, because, yeah, what the value of that sale would normally be?
Through the Mayor, to Assemblymember Sumner, the value of 160-acre timber sale is going to widely vary. There's there's all nature of timber harvests that have happened in the borough. The highest value timber that we've had on borough forest land are mature spruce. And so today, the highest value timber we have are the standing dead spruce that haven't rotted yet or snapped off and hit the ground. And so if we remove the highest value timber, then what we're left with is the birch. And most of our birch is over mature, it's not lumber grade, it's not veneer grade. Most of our over mature birch is good for firewood. And right now, when talking with people that are interested in cutting on borough forest land, we're looking at about $5 a cord for timber harvest for mostly firewood. So 160 acres, it would depend on the tree counts, and it would it would depend on the density of the trees and the quality of the trees. If you let me do the math on that, I could come up with some endpoints on both sides of that potential value, but it would take a little bit of doing.
Yeah, just maybe like an order of magnitude estimate.
Okay.
Possible.
So I can give you an example of one that we just did the tree counts for. We have a 48-acre commercial timber sale that we'd estimated to generate 800 cords. So 48 acres, 800 cords, $5 a cord, and that had big spruce on it that were still standing, they were dead, and it's got the over mature birch that you'd find anywhere else. And I I don't know that it's fair to extrapolate that stand to 160 acres. We'd be hard pressed to emulate that on every acre of borough forest land. It's more of a closed canopy, so the trees are denser. But that would be, I'd say, on the high end of what we'd expect for 180-acre sale. Now, if we step back from that a little bit as a contrast again, if it's 160-acre salvage sale, and it's a select cut for just the spruce, and and we're doing good here, and we got half the cords that are spruce, so this is going to be harder and harder to find over the next couple of years. But let's say we've got the same 48 acres, and it's got 400 cords of standing spruce that are left. We might do a little bit better on a sale like that, but we're having the volume of wood that's being sold. And so in the end, it might actually be less money if it's the select harvest. So we'd see that be the low end of the price, and if they were cutting everything, it would be higher because of the volume would would increase.
So so it, like on a, on the example you gave of 48 acres, 800 cords, $5 a cord, that's like $4,000?
Yes.
Do you guys have an estimate of how much it would cost to put together a timber transportation plan? Like just, I mean, I know that that's not not within the department, but what would you estimate a contractor or somebody that's looking to do one of these has to pay in engineering fees and whatnot to to put together one of those transportation plans?
Okay. Through the Mayor. The the cost for the traffic safety plan and the application for the permit are going to depend on the location and the size of the cut, right? So we've had one application since 2007 for a timber transport permit, and that was in 2018, and the location was Chi-Jock, so it was quite a ways down Oilwell Road. And the the permit really focuses on borough-maintained roads. So if you've got a cut that's got a driveway onto the Parks Highway, it's not going to be complicated. You're going to merge onto the Parks Highway, and you're kind of done. But if you're running down 25 miles of borough road and the road's substandard, that cost is going to be significantly higher. And in that case, the applicant hired a traffic engineer, and I have a copy of their permit, and it was generated by an engineer. and it was generated by an engineer, and it was several pages long for the application and then the traffic safety plan because they had to adjust, or excuse me, address the site distances on the haul route on the substandard road and actually provide information to the public works department that then figured out what road improvements were needed before they could start hauling timber. For the 48-acre sale that I mentioned, they're going to run about a mile and a half down Yoder Road and then hit the spur road. So that safety plan would be for about a mile and a half of Yoder Road. I don't know if they would need to hire a traffic safety engineer to draft their application for them, but depending on the applicant, they might. And so engineer time goes for a couple hundred dollars an hour, a firm maybe $1,000 for an
Assemblymember Young.
Thank you. That was an awesome explanation. In simpler terms, our lumber is junk. Our trees are rotting. They're over matured, and the reason we're only getting four grand out of a cut like that is because of this legislation. So thanks for bringing it forward. I'm excited to support it.
Assemblymember Nowers.
I just want to follow up. I thought that was an interesting question. And so just to clarify, the timber transport permit does not require that you hire an engineer. That's question number one, and then I have one more question.
That is correct. The application for a timber transport permit, to the best of my knowledge, does not require a stamp of an engineer that has a background in safety. So, no.
And then the legislation doesn't set any limit at which point, if we adopt this, it removes the timber transport permit altogether. So it doesn't, if you came along with a big project, which seems unlikely given the state of our wood, but there have been some in the past, there would be no requirement for a timber transport permit, no matter the size of the cut if we adopt this. Is that correct?
That would be the result of the legislation in accordance with the intent in which it was drafted.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Two.
I would just like to echo Young's position, and I'd say this is a good thing we're getting rid of all this junk out of the borough.
Point of order. We're just doing clarifying questions now, I believe.
Yeah, we're just asking questions of staff. We can discuss this after the public hearing. Any other questions of staff? All right, let's open the public hearing. We have a list. First one on the list is Greg Bell. Would you like to speak? Come up to the mic. You have three minutes. Give your name.
My name, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Greg Bell. I've had a, started my sawmill in 1979 where the Walmart location is, and been around about 40-some years. Anyway, over the years, when we first started, it was somewhat easier to get timber from the Matsu Borough. We had one lady, Norma Coleman, and we'd see her, and she tells where we wanted the timber, and we'd say where we wanted it. She'd look on the map, talk to her people, and say, okay. And we have to get that approved by the Assembly, go to the Assembly, three days later, get the permit probably, if there's no objections. Over the years, and there's probably 20 or so operators around the borough up and down the old Palmero Sella Highway, up by the Bu, you know, Talkeetna, all around. Today, there's very few left. I don't know if anybody's really doing it, and they're not too excited about, the people that are left aren't too excited about doing it. Incrementally, regulations, strange regulations like this timber permit for trafficking, like you said, the borough, I mean, the gravel people don't have it. You know, that's a blatant example of radical, stupid legislation. And the timber, you're right, it's rotted, it's dead. I had to send a couple of things to a couple of log packages, one to Catchcan, one to Kodiak this year, and we had to go through about, about every third tree was a tree we could use. And that's a lot of manufacturing to get a fine product. It just isn't there. So the trees, you know, are overripe, they're rotten, and we've let them go too long. We did, you know, before the beetles had hit the trees, and we knew they were dying, and we came to the borough and we said, gee, we'd like to buy this timber around the mill. We're right here. Borough manager came out, I think George came out. We looked, talked for about three, four hours. We were unable, never able to buy any timber from the borough. Nope, we put it in writing, we did all kinds of things, wasn't allowed. They rotted, they've fallen over, they're worth nothing today. It's like tomatoes in a bucket, you know? I mean, yeah, when they're fresh and new, they were something, but now they're rotten tomatoes, nobody wants them. And it's not just the borough, but it's happened in the Forest Service, it's happened, you know, all around the state. And they put fuel reduction out. They said, we're going to pay you to get rid of the old junky wood because being good stewards of the land, you want to take care of it. And, you know, of course, the federal government had the money to do it, and they did thousands of acres in Chugatch National Forest of fuel reduction and getting new growth to come up so they have a new vibrant forest. And that's probably what needs to happen around the borough at this point, or a fire's going to come through and burn everything up, and heaven forbid, you know, that's a terrible thing. Lots of people get hurt on that. That's too bad we have to put the money behind, you know, in doing the, paying the fire suppression versus putting the money into the timber so it's worth something someday. And I think the borough would be smart to do a study on what other states do with their timberland and how the borough could do a better job of managing their timberland. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on the phone? All right, let's take, phone call, please.
Hello, this is Ruth Wood, and the phone's worked this time, although I've still gotten texts from some people that are having trouble getting through. I would like to testify that I, like many others, and any, almost anyone I know, I support the borough's efforts to make salvage timber sales easier. And I think some of the broader proposals that are in this ordinance make sense. And so, but, and most of what we've talked about tonight is the traffic safety plan and the timber transport, timber transport permit. And I want to say that the reason that none have been done, only one permit has been issued is because there haven't been sales that required it. They're not required on every single sale, and most salvage sales are anticipated to be small. The one permit that was on Chejoc was not a salvage timber sale. It was a big, big sale that was going to send our trees to China. And that was a very important, important plan and permit. And I think that repealing these two pieces of code is a big mistake. And if you need to change them so that they work for salvage sales, I can see that. But repealing them altogether when in the future there could be another huge timber operation, it could be up here where our roads are longer and not very good. And having, the way it is, if this is repealed, it doesn't have to go to an RSA board, it, the borough and the public works director do the contract. And contracts are not the way to protect the public. I also want to say, on a different part of this, oh, well, Emerson Kruger mentioned that no federal incidents had happened, but in 2005, a chip hauling truck overturned on Montana Creek Road, and that was what led to this legislation. So there is a reason to have it. I also wanted to say, and I doubt that you're going to address it, but I had some concerns that salvage sales are automatically exempted from annual allowable cut. And I think that probably there are many cases when they should be, but I think this should not be an automatic exclusion. It should be something that is, the manager could approve it, the community director could, community, can't say it, sorry.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Okay, fine. It just needs some criteria. It shouldn't be automatic.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me talk, and I hope that the star three is working for the other people now.
Thank you. We have another caller, please.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. My name is Kathy Trump, T-R-U-M-P, and I support amending the borough code to facilitate the removal of spruce bark beetle damaged timber, but I do not support section six and seven of this proposed ordinance. These sections of code are needed for other timber operations, and they do not need to be repealed for salvage timber operation. They tend to be too small to require either a traffic safety plan or timber transport permit. I would also like to say that I am a member of the Talkeetna Community Council. I'm on the board, and I feel like the process has been rushed. We were never notified or consulted about this ordinance, and we never were, we never gave any input. Thank you so much for letting me speak, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We have another caller.
If we not repeal the traffic safety plan and timber transport permit code, these provisions came about because of the NPI's chip harvest, harvest operation to create chips. And I don't know what a federally reportable accident is, but I do know that one of the triggers for all of this was a chip truck speeding and tipping over. To me, that's an accident that has public safety implications. So there is legitimate reason for this code. I also was aware of the Chejoc harvest on Oilwell Road. Some of you may be aware, it's a long, narrow road, steep grades, titons, one-lane bridges, inadequate site distance. The public travels that road. It would be intermixed with industrial logging trucks. The contract was able to address road maintenance issues, but it did not and was not able to address the basic fundamental safety issues of having this kind of road with industrial and public traffic mixed in. And it was a good plan, and it didn't come into play because of, the harvest did not occur eventually because of trade tariffs with China, between the U.S. and China. And, and so, and so the market evaporated. But this is a good example, the conditions on Oilwell Road are excellent example of why this kind of legislation is necessary. And timber transport is not singled out. Gravel operations, they may not have a gravel transport permit, but they're subject to a CUP which gives the public a chance to weigh in. And the last thing I want to say has to do with lack of notice. The TAB Board, the local road service area board, the RSAs were not notified. These people, their mission is roads, and all of them should have been noticed and given an opportunity to engage in this at the front end. I mean, there's legitimate grounds for discussion of this, and to have it jump immediately over these boards and go to the planning commission with no specific notice is really not right. So, that must mean I'm done. So, anyway, I hope that you will not repeal these sections six and seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Another caller, please.
Hello, my name is Laura Wright, W-R-I-G-H-T, and I would like to agree with the other people who spoke that I am, I do not support the section six and seven that would repeal those important parts. I have lived in the Upper Valley and recreate a lot off of Oilwell Road, and when they were doing that potential timber sale, or that timber sale which ended up not happening, it was a pretty scary thing with the roads and the heavy trucks. I also was here when NPI was logging back in 2005, and that was horrendous. There was another major accident on the Parks Highway that year, not just on Montana Creek, but on the Parks Highway. In fact, you can still see the overturned chips there off to the side when that truck turned and burned. So I feel like you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater by just getting rid of things to make things quote unquote easier. I think it won't do that. I'm worried that it will just be kind of a free-for-all with no rules, and I could certainly sympathize, having taken out many of my own beetle-killed spruce, that we have a situation on our hands, but I don't know if the way the borough was going about it by repealing ordinances is the way to go. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify?
It was already on. I'm sorry, sir. If you can press it again. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Andrew. I own the last standing sawmill business in the valley that's actually producing.
Can you give us your last name, please?
My name's Andrew Traxler, T-R-A-X-L-E-R. I've produced 150,000 board feet this year. I've milled 20 people's homes, high supply, 75 woodworkers, contractors like Sumner Homes in the valley. Right now, we have a serious problems in our forest, as you already know. I'm operating in Tambovee's area right now. We have logged 50 semi-loads of beetle-killed spruce on 200 acres. Nobody has reported a complaint. We actively move around 1,000 semi-loads in the valley per year. I've moved 125 semi-loads through the Big Lake area. Papoose Milling is located on Papoose Twins Road. We have five blind hills, six blind curves, one of the worst roads in the Matsu Borough. It's definitely the worst road in the Big Lake Road Service area. We've never had an accident. We've never had a complaint. The Big Lake Community Council meeting sent a letter of recommendation to you to remove this ordinance. They, my logs must go through Big Lake. I've been to every community council meeting and every road service advisory board meeting and stood up and asked if one person noticed a log truck over the last year. No one, not one person has ever raised their hand or posted any complaint of the log trucks. Tambovee hasn't had any reports of the complaints of the 20 homes I've milled in her area over the last six weeks. This is a no-brainer. Your sawmill industry, your logging industry, and your firewood industry is almost gone. You need to act now. That's what you're doing today. This is step one. So we'll be back, depending on what you vote today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to comment? Please come forward.
My name's Scott Jewell, Hatch Pass Mount Services. I was the contractor on Oilwell Road that did the maintenance for Denali Timber Management. That cost 50,000 bucks is what that cost him for that contract on Oilwell. Eric and I from Denali Timber Management are currently working with Nine Dragons from China, and we've given them a contract. Nine Dragons from China, and, uh, we've given them a contract, uh, for 150,000 ton of chips per year over the next five years. But there are many factors that are going to play into this right now as to our cost of doing business, and of course, your decision here tonight will, will play a big role in that. So, the calls that I heard from the people on Oilwell Road, it's, I shouldn't say it's comical, but, uh, we went in Oilwell Road, did all of our work, and then after I left, we received just continuous complaints about the road grader noise and so on, so forth, which turned out to be their annual road maintenance, uh, DNS Road Service. So, most of the people that were complaining were complaining because they wanted to complain, not because, we were already gone. So the work we did, we went and brushed the corners and widened the road and built a big parking lot for parking and so on, so forth. So, most of the complaints that come in, come in well after we were already gone, so, um... I guess I don't know what else to tell you, other than, uh, like I say, we're, uh, we were scheduled for a Zoom meeting with, uh, the Chinese on last Friday. They canceled because ironically, one of the members has the COVID, so... But, uh, what happens here tonight will play a huge role in, in whether we're able to get back or not. We, they are willing to give us a contract right now for 150,000 tons of chips for the next five years, so, um, we'll see how it plays out. But, uh, I would strongly encourage you to do what it takes to get rid of the beetle kill. It's, it's going fast. Uh, when we were out at Port McKenzie a couple of years ago, the, um, Canadians had some of the best studies, and most of those were about a maximum of six-year life on the beetle kill. The samples, and, and Greg's actually sending some samples, uh, for us right now to help us out with this, uh, project, and, but some of the stuff that they've seen from the previous samples are, uh, right now it's about 50/50 on whether they can even use it for fuel. So, mixed with birch, um, they say they can take about a 50/50 mix, but most of it's going fast, and I know, I, I don't think there's much use in firewood anymore for it, so... Anyway, I would encourage you to move forward and try to help, help the logging, because otherwise it, it won't move forward, and we'll just be dealing with a mess, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Do we allow that? All right, Mr. Two has a question for you, Mr. Jewell.
Where, where would your chips go from Oilwell?
Well, I'm not positive if we can get back to this that they'll come off of Oilwell Road. Um, but, uh, Port McKenzie was, uh, where we're trying to send them out of, so, um... But I'm not positive that they'll still come off Oilwell Road. I know Eric's got, uh, had many of, of different sources. Oilwell was where it was starting, but that was just the start of, uh, start of the program, so... But I'm not positive that'll, you know, it depends on where, you know, how far we get here, but, uh, we've given them a price. They've accepted that price, and, uh, it's a price that we can make money on, and they're happy with. Once again, you know, before, they were logs. Before the, you know, they were just going to be, uh, mostly logs. Now it's strictly chips. The logs are of no value to them anymore, so it's just chips. This, this go around.
So, no matter where you get the chips, though, you'll try to export it out of the port?
Correct.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else on the phone? Anyone else in the room wish to testify? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Assemblymember Nowers, will you please move the legislation?
I move to adopt ordinance 21-092. I think I have a amendment to read.
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to amend ordinance 21-092 as follows, by striking section six and seven on page six, also by in the title, deleting the words, and repealing MSB 28.70.080 Traffic Safety Plan and MSB 28.60.080 Timber Transport Permit, and lastly, by striking whereas clauses six through 12.
So this amendment is in your red folder? I believe the clerk sent it out earlier today. Did you wish to speak to that? Would you like me to speak to that?
As the maker of the amendment, yes, that would be great if you speak.
All right, I, I brought the amendment forward, um, based on comments I heard from multiple residents in my northern community in particular, which would potentially be impacted by a larger, uh, timber operation. Um, in addition, there were comments by the Road Service Area Advisory Board and the Transportation Advisory Board, and one of the local community councils. So, there are concerns that repealing the timber transportation permit and safety plan, um, would have some negative consequences for the neighborhoods where this harvesting would be taking place. So there's, as you've heard, the folks who testified, there's, there's a lot of support for removing the, the beetle kill spruce, and, and there's no opposition to, um, im- improving the opportunities for these salvage sales. Their concern is strictly with, uh, section six and section seven. So, um, as was mentioned earlier, I, I do believe we can do the salvage sales without, um, tipping that threshold and requiring the timber permit. We're currently allowed two trips per day, 10 trips per week, I believe, is, is the, uh, allowable limit that would not require a transportation permit. And so all I'm asking with this amendment is that we leave the safeguards in place until we know more about whether there really will be a larger sale and, and local concern. So, that's my amendment. Assemblymember Sumner?
So, I am going to object to the amendment just because I, I don't really think there's enough money in timber for people to justify doing these transportation plans. And furthermore, I mean, a transportation plan for timber, I, I seem to recall a few years ago, I think there was a fuel truck tipped over on the, on the parks on fire. I think I've seen a sewage truck flipped over. I mean, we, we allow people to haul a lot more noxious stuff without a transportation plan, and, uh, logs come off the truck. You can pick them back up and put them back on. A lot of other stuff's a lot more dangerous. So I don't really see any justification for a specific, uh, transportation plan just for timber, other than if you just want to shut down logging, which, um, it seems like with these, this beetle kill spruce, we really ought to be encouraging it, uh, so we don't get continuing, you know, have these continuing problems with, uh, massive forest fires. So, um, I'd, I'd oppose the amendment and, uh, support the ordinance.
Thank you. I do just want to address that, because that conversation has come up before, and I agree, um, that fuel trucks and septicage trucks and, and other larger, um, trucks do carry some risk. It is really unlikely that you would see dozens of septicage trucks or dozens of fuel trucks on a rural road on any given day. I mean, that's just not going to happen. Um, with a larger timber operation, you could see multiple trucks, and, and that does increase the risk. Uh, Assemblymember Yount?
Thank you. Um, I too oppose the amendment in, uh, for other reasons per se than Assemblymember Sumner, but, uh, I don't know if earlier what was said was exact truth, that one of the people who called in said the legislation was put in place because a truck tipped over, and, you know, it's unfortunate that that happened, but rewrote a piece of legislation because one truck tipped over? Um, that's crazy, the way that, that that happened. And so the unintended consequences are, you know, we're, we're all living with this. The entire borough, we're dealing with major, uh, spruce beetle kill. Our, our logs are no longer of any value other than chips. Um, I, I would like to bring, if it's okay, Director Barkley up and get his opinion on this, because I can tell you, I don't have his expertise. I don't have 0.1% of it, but every, I hate the rain. I can't stand it. And every time it rains in the summer the last few years, I've been so excited, because I'm, I'm literally nervous all the time we're going to have another Big Lake Fire. So, if it's okay, I'd like to ask your opinion on this, and, and just logging in general, and if you think it can help prevent forest fires in the future, sir.
Good evening. Director Bark, uh, Director of Emergency Services, Ken Barkley. Uh, through the Deputy Mayor, Assemblymember Yount. So, one of our biggest concerns is the spruce beetle kill. We call them torches, and if you've ever seen one ignite, which takes nothing, just a, uh, amber on the ground will ignite them. If you blink, it's burnt. It flashes, the whole entire tree does. And, uh, the, it creates its own weather pattern to where we've actually witnessed the spruce beetle kill torching off and jumping the highway when we've been trying to keep it from the highway. We've lost it three times, I believe, in the last few years, where it's jumped the highway as we're trying to, uh, extinguish them. Homes have been lost. I mean, we all know that. So anything we can do to mitigate the spruce beetle kill is going to benefit all of us. Uh, there's not one area in the borough that is not affected by the spruce beetle kill.
Thank you, and I, I firmly believe Mother Nature's way better off without us. Um, I haunt in the farewell burn area. It's where my cabin's at. We go for two, three, four weeks every year, and we're all familiar with what happened out there. It's one of the largest burns in the, you know, ever. Um, it's been decades, and it is just decimated. And, you know, in an area like that, maybe, you know, that's Mother Nature doing what she's supposed to do, but, uh, when in, in an area in the Matsu Borough or similar to ours, we have a lot of homes, and, and we've seen what happened in the last big fire, and obviously, we're not as densely packed as California, but I, it's this responsible behavior. You, if you're going to continue to develop a community and grow more homes and involve more people and build more schools, you know, you got to understand, no, nothing is forever. We're not forever. Trees aren't forever, and if we just forever just let them stand there and rot, we're going to have major problems. I cannot believe, I, I hope what I heard tonight was actually false. I, I hope that legislation wasn't really put in place because one truck tipped over, but I got a gut feeling that it was. It was a knee-jerk reaction, and, you know, here we are years later with unintended consequences. So, I'm going to oppose the amendment and support the legislation as written. Thank you.
Assemblymember Nowers?
Thank you. Um, I was around for the Big Lake Fire. I was behind the fire lines there. I've seen what those spruce can do, and you have a little wind behind it, and, and they do shoot off like, uh, firework. I was also around for, for NPI, um, and I don't, uh, I don't think this legislation is what's killed our market. I think it's the quality of our wood in the actual market. Um, I think we have a great thriving local market. There was a mill in District Two that's been supplying firewood and, and so on. Um, that NPI was not a non-issue. Um, among other things, they ended up logging the wrong land twice, and the borough ended up in a big lawsuit and paid a lot of money over that. So it wasn't a, a non-issue that, that triggered this. I think the goal of this is to try to feed our local mills and get some of that spruce bark beetle off, um, you know, in a way that helps local industry and takes care of a problem at the same time, without the borough having to pay to send people to, to cut it. Um, if we can do it another way, that makes a lot of sense to me. So the goal of this is to try to, to encourage those, those salvage operations. Um, I think even if we pass this as-is, we wouldn't see a huge market. Um, in terms of that, that smaller market, I think we might see some. Um, addition, I just, and the reason I would support this amendment is because I think this could go too far without these amendments and create a situation that triggered this legislation in the first place. And I also think if you're a small operator, though, you're, you're not, you're either going to fall under those limits, or if you're above those limits, you're not required to get an engineer. So, um, hopefully, you know, I would love to see it be a higher limit, 80 acres, um, four trucks a day, but I think you really have to go through the boards to... I, I, I'm not going to try to say what the number should be. If you're a big project, doing a permit shouldn't be what makes or breaks you. So I, I get the, the argument for the small operators. I think this, these amendments allow us to open that door to a certain extent, but not, um, leave us without something in place for those bigger projects that could come along that triggered this in the first place. So I, I urge support for this amendment.
Assemblymember McKee?
I oppose the amendment, and I'm for the, the ordinance as proposed. I, I've talked to the borough manager, and he actually has, I think, checked a couple of things. You know, we have made it so difficult for people in the logging business here. We have people buying logs from Fairbanks and bringing them down. That's crazy, folks. The, the whole idea that, that, and by the way, this whole thing was thrashed around with the last wood chipping operation. The folks on Oilwell Road don't want any trucks, zero trucks going on their road. Okay, that's the long and the short of it. If we want to have any industry in the valley, we better promote it, and this is one, one way to do it, okay? We ought to get rid of the trees. Uh, it just doesn't make sense to me. It's kind of like one balloon, one, one truck, and, and we're going to pass a law? Give me a break.
Assemblymember Sumner?
So, I, I just wanted to clarify. So the, the timber transport permit doesn't require an engineer's stamp, but if you have to get a traffic safety plan, wouldn't that require an engineer? I, I've never seen one that didn't.
Through the mayor, through Assemblymember Sumner. I don't believe the code requires an engineer for either the traffic safety plan or the permit application.
Assemblymember Two?
I, I don't need to speak. I think the other assembly members have done it for me.
Assemblymember Nowers?
I just want to be clear. I absolutely support getting that dead, dead wood out of there. Um, but I am respectful of the amount of money that went out the door of this borough from the last operation in a lawsuit. And so, kind of being cognizant of that, and, uh, you know, I, either way, unfortunately, you know, as noted, Keen Eye Fairbanks, no place, no other place has these kind of regulations, and they have the same problems we do. If you drive down to Keen Eye, there is a ton of dead spruce down there. So, um, I'm all for ways to encourage the market. I just don't want to go where we've been before and that triggered this. So, that's where I'm coming from on this, and I think that's a, a decent compromise, given the legislation that's in front of us.
Assemblymember Yount?
I'd like to clarify that, um, what NPI did, cutting on the wrong piece of property multiple times was, it was an unfortunate, terrible situation, but... Passing legisla-, you know, and it really has nothing to do with the legislation that we passed. That just means that we need to do a better job as future assemblies and our borough staff of actually holding people accountable for that. It has nothing to do with road safety or anything else. Um, I just wanted to clarify that, so, thanks.
Assemblymember Two?
Can we call the question?
Any objection to calling the question? There is objection to the amendment, so let's vote on the amendment.
It failed with Assemblymember Nowers and Bovee in support.
Any additional discussion on the primary motion, the ordinance? All right, is there any objection to passing the ordinance? Did you, did you object?
I'll object for the purposes of a vote.
All right, let's vote on the ordinance.
It passed with Assemblymember Bovee opposed.
So, for ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine nine, I have a conflict of interest. Uh, this is the grant that funds my daughter's position in the Emergency Operations Center. So, Assemblymember Nowers will lead the meeting for the next ordinance. Did you have some, just, so, okay.
Okay. Um, so, Madam Clerk, would you please read the legislation into the record?
Ordinance twenty-one zero nine nine and ordinance accepting and appropriating three hundred and fourteen thousand and forty-two dollars from the Alaska State Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Emergency Management Performance Grant Program and requesting a reappropriation of three hundred and three thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars from the Emergency Management Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two operating budget and ten thousand five hundred from the Emergency Services Administration Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two operating budget for emergency management wages and benefits with accompanying resolution twenty-one zero nine seven, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for a grant in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand forty-two dollars from the Alaska State Department of Military and Veterans Affairs Emergency Management Performance Grant for emergency management wages and benefits. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Looks like we have a staff report.
To the Assembly, Cheyenne Heindl, Finance Director. Um, this is a grant we have gotten several years in a row. It actually allows us to um, pay for the emergency management staff's wages and benefits and um, therefore saving area-wide funds.
Any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anybody on the list? Okay. And do we have anybody online? Okay. And do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Okay. So, I'll go ahead and close public hearing. Assemblymember Sumner, will you please move the legislation?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine nine and resolution twenty-one dash zero nine seven.
Is there any objection to passing ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine nine and resolution twenty-one dash zero nine seven? Seeing no objection, it's passed.
Sorry. So, so are we okay continuing or do we want to take a break? All right.
Oh, wouldn't break. He says break.
Yeah, let's, let's take a five-minute break. Ted.
And a separate uh, kennel action system for mushers would be an advantage for both the mushers and the borough. Uh, Dr. Kwame, veterinarian and Palmer, and I have been uh, holding a uh, mushers rabies shot clinic at Kneek Bar for many years. And last year, we vaccinated almost uh, two hundred dogs at the clinic. And I believe uh, the animal control officers can administer rabies shots, but my experience has been that the mushers uh, prefer their own separate system. And I did want to say a few things on the animal control officer system. Um, I would like to propose and I'll work toward considering, borough considering replacing that with um, a new system called the Animal or Veterinary Healthcare Specialist. And they would um, sort of drop the tickets and fines and that kind of thing and, and replace it with just uh, good quality healthcare for all the animals in the borough. And I think the general public would be marks um, accepting of a system like that. Um, so basically, there's a certificate that's now available at the university level for veterinary assistant classification. And these, these applicants could be used for um, the animal care specialist. And so, basically, what I am gonna work with is uh, replace the um, uh, legalistic system with a more animal, animal healthcare system. So, thank you. And I'll, I'll probably be working with my um, Laysmont area borough representative to try to get some of these going.
Okay, thank you very much. Beth Freed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My name is Beth Freed, F-R-E-A-D. I'm sure all of you know that. I am, I can't remember which subject after tonight. I've got a bunch of notes. So, what subject did I tell you I wanted to talk about?
Rail gas line.
That's it. It's right here. Um, railroads. Uh, you probably don't know that I served on the Transportation Advisory Board for six years and I s- am now on the Governor's Roads and Highways Advisory Board. So, I know a little bit about transportation, just enough to know what's trouble. A hundred-foot right-of-way is what you have on a railroad. You put a natural gas line in there, you want it underground. Uh, we just had a train go off the rails in the lower forty-eight a couple of eight, weeks ago and uh, same danger to elevated natural gas pipelines. It costs more to send it underground, heck of a lot safer when you're next to railroads. That makes me very, very nervous, especially with all that spruce bark beetle kill out there. So, that's something I'd really like you to take into consideration. Um, another thing that I wanted to point out, and Jesse tells, tells me it's irrelevant, but I don't think it's that irrelevant, in that the water drilling rigs would need to go up sometimes a hundred, two hundred. I've heard of three hundred depths to get really good, clear water without all the iron in it. So, those are, they're big, but they're not very big. And, and the ordinance just said drilling rigs. So, it is a topic because I think everybody up there spoke on it except for Mr. Brown and Mr. Sparo- oh, no, Mr. Sparopoulos spoke to it as well. So, those are the two things that are really outstanding for me, aside from the fact that you're, you have a transportation-